...vote yes or don't vote no?
I don't think you should vote at all. The application is not accurate.
This is what they planned. This is what they submitted.
No, yeah.
One of the conditions is they've got to correct it. One of the accesses is robbing.
Right.
That's part of the condition. That's where the one access goes away here, so determine why it's inappropriate.
Right, but doesn't that application-
They submitted it this way. We come up with a condition. We want one access on DeRozier. That's one of the conditions. So now they have to go get rid of one access on DeRozier if that's what we so-called and vote in on.
Doesn't this rule state that your- the application has to be correct?
This is accurate. This is accurate right here. This is what they submitted. We said no. We're putting a condition on it. You can have one access on DeRozier. There's your condition. Now you go back and you fix it. This is what they submitted to us. This is their accurate, what they submitted.
That's what's submitted and it's not-
You guys take a twist and turn everything in circles.
The correct entrance or exit onto DeRozier hasn't even been established yet. You guys have just been talking about it. No?
Right, that's one of the conditions. One access.
But how can you vote on something? How can you have a public hearing when the public has no idea where that exit onto DeRozier is gonna be?
Nine hundred feet.
There's no proposal planned.
It's right here. It's one of the conditions we put on it.
No, there's no- where's the drawing that shows that, Jeremy?
It's right here.
Where? Show me that drawing.
Same one you got. This is our plan, right here.
It does not show one.
They submitted it. We said no. We want one access off DeRozier.
It shows two.
If that's the correct drawing, why isn't it up there?
Right.
It is. It's right there.
No, that has two as a missing.
It has two driveways.
Okay, let's- let's move your units, please. Get back to the public hearing here.
One access.
We're having a discussion up here. It turned into another discussion out there. Keep it with the board right now, so we can make a decision.
Just one other thing I'd like to mention in that these-
Uh, be quiet, please. You have your time. We're making the discussion up here now.
Yes, but I forgot. Others have spoken.
You have your time. You have your time.
They're getting double billed for everything. Streets, water, and sewer.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask you to quit. You're stirring trouble up. You're interjecting things. You don't come to the podium. You weren't asked. You had twice. You went up. And now you're gonna keep it up. We're making- we're trying to discuss something here and you're not even allowing us to. Let us get through this. Anyway, any other discussion up here?
Well, it seems like there's still a lot of application.
Seems like there is. And you know what? You can vote according to the way you want. So... Even if we vote this down, the city council still could vote it up. So it's- we're just recommending board. We're hearing this stuff, and this is all taken to the council, okay? Anyway, any other discussion? Call a question, please. Only question. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries.
Unbelievable.
It goes to the city council. What I would recommend, you get ahold of your city council and you burn their ears with what you don't like about it, what you do. If you have concerns about the south half, get ahold of your council people from out there and you tell them. They will listen to you.
The funniest part about it is, you know, I thought we were pretty fortunate enough that there was four on the council. And we voted them in, and I guess nothing could happen. We get all the same thing.
Especially when you have people like Mr. Jeremy there.
We're moving on. We have other business tonight. Come to the council meeting. When is this meeting gonna be?
Monday night either.
The twentieth?
Well, be there.
Ask for your vote.
Yeah, be there.
You're our neighbor. Be there.
Okay, what's the next item here? Variants. Okay, we're having a public hearing on the variants. At this point, has there been a letter of affidavit sent?
Yeah.
Okay, been publicated. City staff, please, express your proposal.
Another map here. They have a house, an existing house around a corner lot they would like to add on and open deck on the south side. Could be up against Ford Avenue towards Fourth Avenue. The minimum permit requirement for ordinance is fifteen feet. If you're just being willing is about- about that fifteen feet, maybe a little bit more than property line. So the eight-foot deck addition would be all- pretty much all within the fifty-foot line of the property. They're proposing that cap or half of the open deck that would connect up to the existing deck. West side of the property, and the other part of it would be roofed in. So the variance request is to be within that requirement. So that's their property. Two lots and garage and a house. This is the side that we had on too.
Okay, and that's off fifteen feet, so everything's okay there. So, uh, so what's not in compliance here that we need to be hearing this? What parts are we mainly concerned about?
Fifteen foot section. Yeah, that's the only- only variance needed, I guess, is put out. One more photo here. A little bit of a drawing, a little bit misleading, but it does show forty-three inch ranges. That's from the road, not the right of way.
Okay.
So this is the house as it is now. You can see that there's a thunderboard on it already. Existing deck on the west side. Catio door that comes out to the Mansell side. This house was built by the lead in nineteen seventy-eight, if I'm not mistaken, at that time. And a permit that was granted at that time did list us a setback to the south of fifteen feet. So presumably the owner, which is not the current owner, but the owner who built the house, presumably knew about that fifteen foot setback. They also put a ladder board on it. I don't know what that indicates, but it's something they probably intend to put up.
Knowing they couldn't without the variance.
So I just- you can see that this is gravel portion of the road.
So the deck off the existing road could be how many feet?
We don't have the survey, but it's gonna be about six or seven feet, or seven or eight feet from the right of way or the property line itself.
From the property line, which means- but the city still owns part of the grass area there. How far the deck will end?
Well, this is approximate, but yes, beyond the road surface, it's still part of the right of way. Basically to where that tree line was.
Okay.
Approximately.
Yep, okay.
So as you can see in my staff report that we went through, there is page four of that staff report. This is our comment. The ordinance does allow for a fire escape, not more than three feet wide to approach and require inside yard setback with all the variance. So they could do a three-foot fire escape. You have the option of proving something different than what they proposed, something lesser if you want. For instance, something to do is get out the door and land it sometime and some stairway down. We want an option. We haven't received any comments. So with the variance, there are state criteria for granting the variance, and those are what's in- starting on page three, with number six. So what we've laid out there are some talking points, I guess, or whatever you want to call them regarding all the criteria that can get granted.
So do we know, I mean, how much room is actually there to, like, stay between the right of way and the actual house?
About fifteen feet.
So that's about exactly where you're at?
Again, we don't have the survey, but probably not. We're estimating.
Which means it would- that door that's facing that street is serving actually no purpose at all if we stick without the variance. And that deck's gonna be eight feet wide, you said, out there?
That's what they're requesting.
Okay, so that's- how do you get four feet from the- the building itself is fifteen and eight? It gives you about seven feet, not four feet.
One of the things that you have to look at is what's the hardship, you know, to request this variance request, knowing that the building was built and it shows that fifty-foot setback. The original builder or owner knew that setback line. Now, obviously, you're probably looking at the fire escape, probably reasonable to request, being able to get some access out of it, while they're not the full eight-foot deck, is something you guys wanna consider as an opportunity.
You're gonna have to go at least six feet. So it's only two feet more, but... Yeah. At this point, you have anything else to add, staff?
No.
Okay, I'd like to hear from Mr. Fitek. You come up to the mic and state your name and address.
I'm Gregory Fitek, Fort Tern, Twelve Streets South Plus. I honestly am not familiar with the setback laws, so I was hoping Brent could probably discuss the whole thing with you. He's a lot more familiar with what in the- the application. Started the application.
Yeah, Brent, okay. As far as the setbacks go, I measured off, when he started over that thirty-foot garden, and then the fifteen feet to the house, which was about that fifteen-foot mark. He wanted the deck on the front, shoulder, and he wants it eight feet out. So I think it is on the fifteen-foot, I guess, gap there. You may have some space for the foot eight foot front.
Okay, and, uh, so you wanna go with an eight-foot deck. There'd be some holes down. You're actually seven feet from the property line, or you said four. On the way, I was looking at it, it was seven. If we were to put a road through there, someday at Harrow Road, we're gonna push that roped street line a bit wider. And somebody's coming through there and slid off the road. That's why we have setbacks.
Well, partly this is the setbacks, yes, for that reason, as well as, you know, cyclical and such.
Yeah. I don't think there's an infringe on the line of sight as far as coming out of that.
The trees are-
Yeah. Okay, and then you actually wanted- there's a bedroom on that side, or where the sliding door is?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What's on that side? There's a sliding door I saw in the picture.
It's a dining room.
It's a dining room?
Yeah.
Okay. You were looking at this as a fire escape also, as a-
Well, I was just highlighting that the ordinance does allow for a fire escape to be in a setback.
Okay.
It's only by three foot.
Okay. Anyone else? Let's hear that. Okay, at this point, any comments from the public? Okay, close this public hearing at seven fifty-six. We entertain a motion.
Six, seven, seven, five, Sixteenth Street. Sorry, it's three. Six, seven, seven, five, I'm sorry. Sixteenth Street. Sixteenth Street. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to get the discussion started. I make a motion in the affirmative to approve.
Motion made. Go ahead, you're second. Motion made and seconded. It's open to discussion.
I did take a- oh, Mr. Chairman, I did take a write-out test that property here today. And all of the homes along the north side, there isn't much on the south side, but all of the places on the north side of Fort Avenue, none of them extend out beyond where Mr. Fitek's home currently sits. An eight-foot extension out there would, especially with some of the other things, you know, putting a roof on it, you know. Now we're talking about, perhaps, we're almost talking a building addition rather than a walking platform. So I think it would be remiss to approve the request as it stands. I understand his need to probably want to do that, but it's going to impinge our setbacks case. I'm reluctant to do that as it opens- it opens up other instances that may actually be against. I don't think variance is our good thing to do.
And as Mr. Kidman stated, on the hardship, I don't see a hardship. If there was a need for a fire escape, I could understand that. And to push it out eight feet, I'm just taking into consideration that someday if we do put a road through there, we are pushing that out. One of the ways is pretty close to the road. So that's a concern. Anyone else? Hearing none, I entertain a vote. A vote right now. All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
So if I can clarify, the motion, the original motion was to approve it as it stands?
Yes.
Right, so that has failed. You should have a motion to do something different than it. If the motion failed, you should have a motion to pass. So presumably you'd make a motion deny.
Well, the motion's denied. Really should come back with discussion on some alternatives. Not up to offer alternatives.
So I think the motion to deny, you're saying is a motion to dismiss it or to deny. To deny. So at the other place, you mean-
And it's present.
Your motion to approve it as presented.
Yes.
So then you can make any other motion. Anybody can make a motion that would be different from that one. At this point, you haven't passed a motion. It's technical. You haven't passed a motion yet. You haven't really made a recommendation. You just- you just said we don't want to pass the first motion. So if somebody else can make a motion to deny it, somebody else could make a motion to approve something. That's your ruling on the road. But you need some other motion.
Well, I think we, you know, if they needed a landing area for egress, I think there could be, you know, certainly-
And it does allow up to three feet without variance. So I mean, if that's kind of what we're thinking, they could do up to three-foot landing and not request variance. If the board's thinking something more than that-
Could they run that landing all the way over to the other deck?
The same.
Yeah. Instead of an eight-foot wide deck, you'd have a three-foot. You'd have a walkway is what you'd have. It's not a deck, but a deck exists. It would give you access around. I don't know what, you know. I don't- I don't think you're going to see an eight-foot deck because it's going to be an addition, especially a covered roof device. I don't think you're gonna see that.
So this is an exception that gives the exceptions, you know. College will not consider questions on those yard requirements. Deciding career year as per an aside yard here. You can have a fire escape not to exceed a width of three.
It doesn't mention anything about it being covered. You have to get a variance and throw a cover over your three-foot fire escape. Yeah, okay.
Because the eaves would then extend over that line. It doesn't say anything. How big the landing? Where's twenty square feet?
It says, uh, depth of urpicated area more than twenty square feet for fire escapes. Yeah, that's okay. If you're doing a bay, you can do two feet out, not more than twenty square feet. But then, comma, fire escape, another dimension, fire escape. Either one of those can be approaching on the side of the yard.
So if the corner came and asked for a three-foot, a three-foot platform that ran all the way to the deck, and then stairs down?
You can do that. You can do that without even a variance.
Well, you can just do it.
True. If you made a motion to just deny completely, they could still do that. If you made, you know, feel like something larger at this rate, you can make a motion to cut that. But I guess what I'm seeing is the two options.
Well, the three feet, to me, seems a little narrow, especially if you kind of move something out of there. By the time you add rails and everything, it's gonna extend out beyond that, you know, additional six inch. Else, you're approaching on that three-foot area, and it could be, like I say, real narrow. The only purpose it's gonna serve is basically an access to get over to your other deck. So I was looking more at, like, maybe a four-foot. Make a little more sense, but it'll allow for railing and stuff. But it's just one of my thoughts. Or- Little, I mean, I don't know what I mean.
It's really unfortunate that the builders, the original builders-
It is unfortunate. If they would've backed that off eight more feet, it would've been nice.
Is that measurement gonna be from the footing?
Or the three feet?
Yep.
Because you also have siding and everything on there, which would push out more. Is it three feet from the base of the door out, from that board?
From the board, basically, probably. So if you had it footing underground, that wouldn't be included in that because that's not impacting the area. It would just be your deck or holes, whichever part of the deck.
Okay, cool.
What's your thoughts of your hose to a five-foot deck?
But that would still require variance.
And require variance.
If they have four feet, they're still gonna need a variance. They can build one. They can build it three feet without even talking to us. And that's what I would suggest they do. If the homeowner would like to make that four feet or four and a half feet, they're gonna have to put in another variance. And they're gonna have to discuss this. And I don't know where we're recording.
Well, I think you could go up there. Ask for eight feet, and you could grant something.
We can grant something less?
That would be my opinion.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion? Okay.
If you make it five feet, whatever. And then, if a road ever goes in, how far are you tied?
It's gonna be within-
You kind of say it issue?
Yeah. If you make it five feet, the- if it's indeed that would be approved, the side of that five-foot deck would be approximately ten feet from the- from the edge of the road.
It's gonna be- it's one of the roads that are actually, we're looking at, probably doing something with it.
I figured when I was out there measuring from the side of the road to the existing wall of the house right now, it's running five feet.
The side of the travel road?
What side?
From the side of the road surface?
From the side of the road, yeah.
Okay.
Now, I honestly don't know where the property line is. I suppose there's states there somewhere. But I just went from the side of the road to the house, which then would leave me seventeen feet from the road.
You see where your curb and gutter, your curb is coming through there? If there's a-
Go back to that previous picture, if you could, please. Is that curving around the corner there, or just around the corner?
Yeah, that's set in place in case if they do widen the road, which that probably is one of the areas that are gonna be on discussion next year or in a couple of years here because they're trying to finish off the dirt roads back in that area.
But the right of way extends inside.
And the right of way is another five feet in yet, isn't it, off that curb?
Probably more than that. But it'll have thirty-three feet of setback. Assuming that's at thirty-six feet face-to-face, you've got eighteen there. You've got probably another seventeen for back to that curb.
And we maintain the right of way for what purpose?
Public utilities, whether it's telephone, gas, digging, sewer, water, and-
Do we know what's in place here?
The right of way?
Do we know what's in place on Fourth Avenue?
In terms of the utilities?
Yeah.
I have maps back in my app, so I don't know where I'm at.
Okay.
You don't know if there's sewer or water, anything through there right now?
Even if there was, I would still want to maintain the right of way because something we have to dig back down to fix it.
Yeah. Okay, let's hear a motion here.
You like four feet?
I like four feet for the reason I know when you build something, if you throw a three-foot in there, you're not gonna have much walkway. You're gonna have a rail, so...
I'm not in favor of it at all. So it's just, to me, if you're able four feet, if you got three feet, if they're gonna use it, come around there and keep-
Well, make the motion then, whichever way you want.
There's rail. Make a motion, is it? I mean, you go to deck on the back of the house, find a hard time, showing hardship to correct a deck on the side of the house, or a four-foot walkway.
The doorway to the other deck that's there is quite a bit narrower. The patio door is quite a bit wider. That's one of the reasons why they wanted it off that side.
The thing is, you can put a deck four feet off. While you can get anything on, driven around the corner to go, it's gonna be useless, pretty much. If you got a three-foot door on the other side, you got a four-foot door there to come. I'm not telling you what to do or not to do.
Well, they allow a six-foot door in there.
There's a, you know, half a door sixty wide. And the other door on the other side's on thirty-two inches wide or something. I think a thirty-inch ladder.
Sometimes-
Those sliding glass are French doors?
French.
French doors open to the inside or out?
Inside.
They open to the inside. Thought maybe this would help me.
Well, three feet.
Trying to find a way to make this work, but I don't see a way to make it work. And unless you want to come back and ask for a different variance, I would make a motion that the homeowner be allowed to build the- doesn't even need- doesn't need a motion to do a fire escape.
Just deny the variance.
Request it.
Yeah.
Already did that, no?
No, no. No, no.
I move we deny the variance.
Go ahead, hear a second?
Awesome.
Don't second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye. I don't know if I can get around that.
Okay. It's denied.
For the council, if you don't change your mind?
Yeah.
You could go to the council and ask them, too.
Listen, go there.
It's still gonna go, yeah. So if you want to bring it up to them, that's next Monday. Come up with your reasons, they just may go with you. Uh, we have to look at numbers here, so... Okay.
All right, Matt.
Yeah. The old business, discussion of storage P O D's regulations. What do you feel about that? Can we put this one and put it on to the next one, since you've had a long evening?
Yeah, I guess I would just say if you're going to do that, look it over. The intent of what I laid out there was just sort of a laundry list of different options for different kind of communities ordinances on these. So I guess what I was looking for when we do discuss it is, what are your thoughts on some of the different options? Most of the meeting contained a bit of ordinance, but not enough to make it up based on that.
We'll take a look at that stuff and we'll bring it back at the next meeting and have a, hopefully have a good discussion on it. Okay, now on to business. Uh, next regular meeting is Monday, August tenth, two thousand fifteen. I adjourn this meeting at eight thirteen, or do I entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved by Ray. Second? Don't hesitate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's over.
Um, two things. Chin, do you need to have her address? That was on my...
First, I have to get personally called.
The phone, yeah.
One, six, six, four, five, Privy. It's Shannon, S.H.A.N.N.I.M. L.E.Y.
Okay, can I, can this be what Charlie?
Agent.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't, I need more clothes.
What?
I need more clothes. My blood been when I was a policeman, it's so hot there.
I won't be able to, before, uh... See you, Doug.
Bye, Doug.
Bye.
Take care.
Bye, Ray. Well, I see what bizarre.
Oh, we make enough variance. Are you working?
I don't think so.
Don't you?
Yeah, that's right. I did get separated at that point.
Did you?
No, I will have, no, I can move the scope. Megan's, um, serving at Mass.
Oh. So the trip to, the, yeah, okay, that was just fun, was mission?
Well, Megan's dad is a policeman, so the first day of the mission.
Oh, okay.
So now we go down to see family in the air.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Can you count that?
And then, I took into consideration, uh...
Yeah.
It is like, not for others, you know, right? Except we're in life, inland, we're not at the ocean at all, so it's not a lot.
Well, you don't, you don't touch the ocean water.
No.
So that's where...
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
But it's very proper British English.
Yes, you're right. Megan's not practiced my English for years, and I'm like, oh, you're right. And it's your second language.
Great, right.
Yeah. How about you, head back to Hawaii?
You got, you got least color.
Well, no, it's too hot. Up down there, yeah. This is from Lake Alexander.
Pressure when it comes to neighbors talking in front of one another where it's re, and it's tough, because you have to live with them, people.
I don't know.
So, if people weren't speaking or stuff, I can understand. Tough.
I want to suggest something to you. Jeremy or you suggested that I was stirring up trouble. Nothing could be further from the truth. My point that I forgot to bring up during my second time, and I had adequate time, I just forgot it.
I know.
Was that the city residents that were here have now had to pay double for city water, for their streets, and for their sewer. And they also have had to be taxed extra this year, all because of the annexation. And that's just simply not fair to do to people, especially in a recessed economy like we're in. That was my point. It wasn't to bring on trouble. I wanted to remind everybody here, including the board, before you made the vote, because you have to vote according to the law, not according to your feelings. You have to vote according to your zoning laws, and that's the reason I brought up the points that I did. I'm not here to ever stir up trouble, Frank, with anything.
At that point, you were.
For the last four and a half years, is justice for everyone, including myself.
And I understand that. But at that point, you were, because we had, the whole thing was getting out of order, because the discussion was supposed to be up there.
If anyone was stirring up trouble, it was Mr. Anderson back here, not me.
I know, I know, I know, and it was getting where...
I was far more, far less disruptive.
I even had to stop that one just before you.
But you didn't make us him stir in a trouble.
Well, maybe, maybe I should have, uh...
Maybe you should have not said that.
Maybe I should have. We make mistakes, uh...
You guys are always so quick to judge why I'm here and why I'm saying what I'm saying, and I don't think that's fair. That's my reason on top of...
And, and you know what? I agree with you. I think...
Jeremy got hostile with me again. For absolutely no good reason. Frank, the plan that was submitted by the Roaches is inaccurate.
And this has to be brought up to the city council?
Yeah, but you guys voted for something that was not, you violated your own rules. That matters, Frank.
Well...
The rules that you, were in that packet, I can show you the sheet here. It said that the application had to be complete and had to be presented to the public, or to the, to the zoning board, twenty-five days prior. That was an inaccurate submittal. It showed two entrances or exits, whatever you want to call them, onto DeRouzer Drive. And yet, the proposal that wa, you, that Ben and, and Kimmon want to push through has won, but that doesn't matter.
It's like, like the discussion...
The proposal was incomplete or inaccurate.
We just had with Mr. Phytect. There was a discussion, we could change that number. We could have said five feet, you know? He came and asked for eight. We weren't going to allow that.
He can't change his application. He can't change his variance request.
But we can make a, a condition and change that, you know, that we will only okay that variance request, but you're not going out any further than four feet. And we had that discussion, and finally it came right down to it, you know, we're bantering over feet here, uh, just deny it. If he wants to take the three feet, or else he has to come back and do it right. Uh, and that's a good point. When you bring that up to the council, tell them. There are people with concerns on the south end. Uh, that was never discussed. That was never part of the conditions. All we did was went with the conditions we saw that were right there. Uh, I'm sure there was other people who opposed the conditions that day. They didn't come forward, you know? So we had to go with what we saw before us as far as conditions. You know, if all them conditions are met, and everything, and, and all of that stuff, and it complies with the stormwater restrictions or, uh, requirements by the state, that's another thing. If it truly doesn't infringe on that, uh, that waterway and stuff, I mean, all, if all of them things aren't totally accurate, that thing's not going to go through anyway.
Yeah, but see, the, the recommendations that staff was making, including that there was going to be one road instead of two and all that, that, that's all just recommendation. That's not any part of an application. What matters tonight for you guys to make your vote was the application was incorrect. Didn't have a signed date on it when it was last refused, and there's even language in there that called this a variance. The, the, the terminology was variances instead of conditional use. It wasn't a variance. It wasn't variances. It was a conditional use that was applied for. So there's all kinds of flukes in the application itself. Signage is to be identified where on the property it's going to be, no matter how big or small it's going to be. That's not an option. Your rules state that signage has to be on the plan. It is not. Those are two very valid reasons that this application was incorrect. You guys shouldn't even have considered it. I'm not a lawyer, but I believe that I'm pretty correct on that.
Robin, Frank, do you mind if I ask you to take your...
Sure.
Yeah, I gotta use the back...